To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Shumansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. We're gonna order the, order of the agendas a little bit. We're gonna bring the C resolution of appreciation. We're gonna do that right now before we start our public hearing. Would you like to join us? First of all, I just got one thing to say before we read this. Forty years of his life has been served in the city of Manistee, and I think that we need to give him a big long break. Whereas Fred LaPointe began his career for the city of Manistee on March twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-nine as a firefighter with the Manistee Fire Department. And whereas during his forty years' tenure, Fred LaPointe gave all his...
Turn around, Paul.
Where also whereas during his forty-year tenure, Fred LaPointe gave his all for his place close to his heart in the fire service, and he's certainly no exception. And whereas Fred became one of the first EMTs at the department in nineteen eighty-three, and also served as a scuba diver, fulfilling his responsibility as the citizens of Manistee in a professional and courteous manner. And whereas Fred was always and will always be a friend not only to the employees of the city of Manistee, moreover to the firefighters in EMS community. Whereas Fred LaPointe served the city of Manistee with great pride and dedication since March nineteen seventy-nine, completing forty years of service to the citizens of Manistee. Therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Manistee City Council, the citizens of this community, we give thanks and appreciation to Fred LaPointe for his long and loyal service to this community, and congratulate him upon his retirement as of July first, twenty nineteen. Furthermore, badge number six-five-four is hereby retired in honor of his service. Further say yes not this resolution. Congratulations. Public hearings. Public hearing to consider an application for industrial facilities exemption certificate Fablite Incorporated. The purpose of this hearing is to afford an opportunity for all residents, taxpayers, and taxing jurisdictions to appear and be heard on the application of industrial facility tax exemption certificate for Fablite Incorporated. Excuse me. Fablite Incorporated has made an application for industrial facility tax certificate pursuant to Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four. The abatement is for improvements to real property, the new facility, of three million dollars. Fablite is looking to add on to its current plant size with a forty thousand square foot plant expansion. The application indicates the expansion will create ten to fifteen jobs within two years of completion. If the application is approved, it will effectively exempt one-half fifty percent of the millage rate on the taxable value of property taxes in an estimated total of ninety thousand annually or one million eighty thousand over twelve-year life of the exemption. An estimated twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars of the estimated total ninety thousand dollars annual exemption is revenue attributed to the city of Manistee. All affected taxing jurisdiction has been notified of this public hearing. Citizens have been advised through publications. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing. This item will be under consideration later this evening. So when I open the public hearing, does anybody like to make any comments?
Good evening, council. Stacy Byterwork, two-nine-seven Lake Shore Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce regarding Fablite. They're a well-established business in our community for many years, and looking at this expansion and the ten to fifteen jobs that it will create, this is great for our community, as well as the ninety current employees that they have. That retention for those employees in the community is amazing as well, so I would encourage you to consider this, and we're excited to have this growth in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of a meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue expenses, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second?
Yep.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, you inadvertently passed over the citizen comments on agenda-related items.
I'm sorry. Do we have any citizens who'd like to comment on agenda-related items? Seeing none? We'll move down to new business. Thank you for that, Mr. D. New business. Consideration of authorizing a resolution to approve the application of Fablite Incorporated, a new facility industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. Earlier this evening, a public hearing was held on Fablite Incorporated application for a new facility industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The exemption request was for twelve years. Staff recommend a term of twelve years for the Fablite abatement because the value of the exemption does not impede the operation of the city or impair the financial soundness of the taxing unit which levies an ad ver lorn property tax in the city. An aggregate state equalized value of real property exempt from industrial facilities exemption from an ad ver lorn taxation within the city. If the application is granted, will not exceed five percent of the total taxable value of the city. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to approve the application of Fablite Incorporated for an industrial facility exemption certificate for a new facility for real property for a period of twelve years after completion. The industrial facility exemption certificate resolution is subject to the terms and conditions of the property tax abatement agreement, which requires the signature of Steve Payne, President of Fablite Incorporated, Mayor Roger Zalinski, and City Clerk Heather Pefley. City Council finds through the adoption of this resolution that the abatement will not have an effect, will not effectively, will not affect the substantial, substantially impede the operation of the city or impair the financial soundness for the taxing unit which levies ad ver lorn property taxes in the city. Do I have a motion? I make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, first of all, I, I wanna say that I'm, I'm very pleased with the expansion, and I know this is a very conservative amount of jobs that we originally talked about, which was more of a three-year term, which was closer to thirty jobs. I think that, that really is helpful to the city and to our economic success. I would just like to encourage Mr. Payne if you could at least think about adding a few more trees to appease the people on Dune's Drive. That would be very helpful. But all in all, I'm very much in favor of this.
Any other consideration comments?
I'd just say, I, I agree. I think this is great for Manistee, and I appreciate the fact that Fablite, you know, could have picked another city to do this expansion, and appreciative of the fact that we were their first choice, and look forward to a long future with them in Manistee.
What else?
Well, I think that, you know, the tour we had, if people have a chance to take a tour of the building, it's really interesting how they make the cabinets and that, so it'd be great to take a tour.
Anybody else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumansky.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of budget amendment twenty nineteen dash four for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. The city manager is required by state law to ensure the actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to, to adopt budget amendment twenty nineteen dash four for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, Ed, what, what expenditures are we voting on that exceeded the budget amounts?
Council, there are two items that this budget amendment addresses. The first has to do with MERS contributions for the Clerks Department. You might recall, council voted late in twenty eighteen to close the non-union division to new hires and put all new hires into a defined contribution plan. When we did that, MERS recalculated the amount that we had to pay, and what we had to do is take a look at all of the retirees and all of the active employees that were in that division and find out which department they actually worked in during their career, and then reallocate that fixed monthly amount amongst the departments. So, it wasn't so much an increase in the amount we paid, although it did go up some, but it was a reallocation of how that was allocated amongst departments. Other departments that may have had an increase were able to absorb that, but the Clerks' budget is so tight, because there just isn't that much to it that she was not able to absorb that. And that shouldn't have that same issue next year, because we allocated those costs in the same fashion in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. The other budget amendment is twenty-five thousand dollars for the refuse account, and we've talked about this repeatedly. The cost of recycling has gone up, and those costs were approved and passed through. Also, we've had more utilization, so we had to add another dumpster in the combination to cause those costs to go up. Fortunately, we are looking to possibly change the way we do some of that recycling that might help to lower those costs in future years, but this is the amendment that's gonna be needed to make sure that we can not go over budget in that. Is there any questions?
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Bradford, but the, the cost and increase in recycling, is that solely because of the cost of getting rid of the material, or is that because it's being used more?
I believe it's both. I know we added an extra dumpster, but I also know that the cost went up. Jeff can probably elaborate a little more on that, and we have to add or make more calls because of the utilization.
The way that Republic explained it is, a lot of the plastics that are being out there now are, like your water bottles, they're a lot thinner, so they weigh a lot less. So the commodity values for those have gone down. There's no commodity value to glass anymore, and so the processing facilities have to pay more people to sort that stuff better. Plus, there's the China Sword, is what they call it, where China, China has limited the amount of contamination or foreign material that's allowed in the, in recycling. So all the processors have now had to do extra labor to make sure that that meets the specifications, which most of the recycled material goes overseas. So, they up their price per ton, they pass it along to Republic. Republic's contract allowed them to pass it on to us. What Ed's talking about, the additional dumpster, we put another fiber dumpster out there this fall, and while this last summer, trying to keep up with the demand because we were paying overages each month when they picked it up, that seemed to hold course until the last couple of weeks. And yesterday, well, today, when they picked up the, the fiber, there was twenty yards more than what the six containers can hold. So, it's, it's, it's more expensive to get rid of it, and it's also, the use of it is increasing.
Thank you. That, I appreciate that.
Is there any other questions? We are probably gonna have to do one more budget amendment next month, which is a little unusual for us, but we got the arbitrator's bills, which we'll be talking about that in a little bit, but we, we got those that'll be booked into this fiscal year, and we still have some Labor Attorney Bill, so that line item for sure is probably gonna have to get adjusted, and there may be a couple residual ones as we're getting the year-end invoices in, but that should hopefully cover it.
Any other question for Mr. Bradford?
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Review of COMA and POMA Act three-twelve arbitration award. Labor Attorney John Gersinger? Gersinger?
Gert Singer.
Huh?
Gert Singer.
Gert Singer, sorry. I butchered that. And city manager, Tad Taylor.
Yes, I'm gonna defer mostly to our Labor Attorney. He's been intimately involved in it, and so I'll turn the floor over to John.
We've been involved in a long and arduous process with the police department. Every other union in the city settled relatively reasonably, and the police department was much more problematic this year. And I think I'd like to blame a lot of it, not on your employees, but they had a succession of three different representatives. You know, you went from a new one who retired. Jim DeVries was here. He retired in June after we had most of things done, and Jim and I had worked with many years, so we knew how to work with each other. They got new rep Jim Cross, and then Jim Cross's view was, once we go to three-twelve arbitration, I don't do anything with it. I hand it on to the people in Detroit who had different views from it. Well, it should've been a relatively simple process. They wanted more money, and city wanted to get a pension plan. Those are the real issues that were, the only issues that were standing between us as of September of last year. And then when the Act three-twelve process came in, they basically said, any of the tentative agreements we had that were made with Mr. DeVries are no longer valid, and we're gonna start over from scratch as to what we want to have. I must admit, I wasn't real pleased with that. We'd, we'd had that issue in the city thirty years ago with the Fire Department, and, you know, it's very problematic. From there, things kind of went more downhill as far as the process. And we'd had a long argument with them, because one of the key issues, they wanted a different schedule changed. And in there, your current schedule, they were working twelve-hour shifts for the last ten years, but hadn't written that language in the contract. But in order to keep the eighty-hours schedule, so you didn't have that, you worked six-twelves and one-eight. You know, so one day you went home early. You had eight hours instead of twelve hours. We tried to work with them, and one of the concessions we had said, you know, we didn't, we can't afford to go to the eighty-four hours, because there's more money from there. And when we did that, we came up with, I said, let's look at one of the schedules. And Jim DeVries and I had gone over this issue many years ago in Greenville. And in order to do that, what you end up doing is having, usually you do it either a six-week or a twelve-week schedule. You work twelve-hour shifts, and then you get to pick one day off during that time, so that you're working twelve hours, but you're not working, on the average, it comes back to eighty. It works very smoothly. And in there, we could've got that done, but they were adamant that they had to get the eighty-four hours. And I must admit, you know, Mr. DeVries was standing right in here, and basically told us, said, well, just give us the schedule. You don't have to tell the city you did it, and you'll, all they'll know is how much the wage increases. They won't know that you're getting a five percent wage increase. Needless to say, we didn't do that. So we go to the three-twelve process. We had an arbitrator pointer. We used the same one for both, because we'd kind of bargained both the contracts together. And things kind of went downhill from there. And one of the issues was, you know, trying to decide who our comparables were. One of the problems we had is the police union representatives were saying, our people are all public safety officers, not just police officers, and should get paid the higher rate the public safety officers get. We pointed out to them that most of them aren't certified to do fires. We don't use them. But we still had the fuss with trying to get who our comparable communities were. You know, they were proposing communities Grand Haven, East Grand Rapids, Muskegon, Ionia, places that we know paid a lot more money, because they were in different metropolitan areas in there, and were trying to game the system. You know, we had to go long issues with the arbitrator, and he finally agreed to select a compromise of those. And we got as our comparable communities Cadillac, Luddington, Big Rapids, Greenville, and Manistee County, a combination there. As we were looking, we had some other ones there. Trying to find a comparable community to Manistee is very difficult, because you're a small community, you know, you've got financial issues, you have a lot of different things out there to try and describe this community. So we, we had a bunch that, and he said, oh, they're too far away. Well, trying to find small cities, if you stay too close, you're not gonna have, you're gonna have some difficulty. But eventually, he awarded those as the comparables, and they were fairly good, even though we had problems, because Big Rapids, of course, has more money. It's got Ferris, and it also has income tax from there. Greenville is full public, integrated public safety. Luddington, Manistee, and Cadillac, you know, all had various schedules from there, and we went into the scheduling parts. We initially filed unfair labor practice charge against the union on the basis that it was a permissive subject of bargaining to force us to go from scheduling eighty hours to eighty-four. We ultimately withdrew that, only because we were, thought we'd get a decision from the arbitrator in our favor quicker than getting that. Hindsight says, we probably should've didn't. We still could reinstate it from there, because the issue is whether or not he followed the law as far as having any authority to make that decision. We also had difficulties that, for some strange reason, he flipped the order. You know, we had to submit all our exhibits before we even had final offers to know what the exhibits were supposed to be. I may have ticked him off when I told him he was dead wrong, but he decided that's the way he wanted to go from there. And then we got the final offers, and frankly, we were somewhat shocked, because, you know, we had things like, when you show someone frustration, we're trying to update things. We put a proposal, there's no jury duty leave in our contract. We proposed a jury duty leave, and they objected to doing that. They objected to anything other than what the things they wanted to have. So we end up actually, even like on things like vacation, we tried to make it read the way we actually do it. We modified it so that they could get more carryover, and now they don't get the carryover, because they didn't get it. But there were a couple of things that were very frustrating, I think, is that, you know, in there, the schedule we saw, we'd never seen the schedule they proposed, the arbitrator, until the day they had their final offer. It was never brought up in bargaining. It was never discussed. It just, here's what they decided to do, you know, to play the game. We also were a little more frustrated on health insurance. Literally, city had gone with all the unions and had agreement back in April as to how the health insurance would go forward. They proposed on their final offer to change the whole system, so that even though everyone else was having a splitting, they wanted to say, no, you should pay all the money up to the hard cap. As we said, there was some game playing going on, that, you know, maybe okay down Detroit, but isn't probably okay up here. Ultimately, we went down, and the arbitrator, we spent a fair amount of time on the scheduling, because the schedule, you've got a problem here on scheduling. Is that, in order to make a routine schedule go without moving people around, you need enough bodies. When you don't have as much bodies, you have to have changes. You know, in order to have a twelve-hour shift schedule work, so people get vacation, you need at least twelve people assigned to road patrol duties, because then you have a day and a night shift, and they go opposite on each day, so you have three on each one, so you need twelve to get it, so you can give someone one day vacation and get off from there. You don't have that many people. You know, and you'd always had a history of having some people doing some floating around. You had a floating schedule, because you had, when they worked only eight hours on one day, somebody works three till seven, rather, three till three, because the schedule just doesn't work out. Not possible do. We explained, and explained to the arbitrator, and I think he got it, but then he screwed it up. And one of the issues we had in there with him is that initially, on Act three-twelve, you have two different standards. On an economic issue, you have to pick the last offer v. the party. On a non-economic issue, you can, you've made your proposals, and then the panel can make a decision regarding what's gonna do, so they can modify it from there. We had argued that scheduling is inherently non-economic. Well, it's got some money issues on it. All the things, everything, when you look in the opinion he ruled on, were non-economic issues, saying people's schedules are being changed. They're being disadvantaged from there. It wasn't money. It was managed things, and it should've been a permissive subject, it should've been a non-economic subject, so we could've done something. In the last gas, we asked him to remand back to bargaining. We went back to bargaining in Lansing. He made us go down there, and, you know, the city proposed a schedule, said, before you go, everybody's gotta revise proposal. We create a revised proposal, the union sent the same one they had. We're not changing anything. We went to arbitrator, we went down to mediation down there. We came up with a revised schedule and said, look, now it's attached to the decision from there that we did, is that we're willing to make the twelve-hour shifts. We can make it work with the eighty hours, so you get the time. We have to write in that some people are gonna schedule for floaters, and it's the junior people, and as long as we have less than twelve people. They were agreeable to that, only if we would agree to have the eighty-four hours. So, any of this nonsense about it was just scheduling. It was money. If they wanted to agree to what they were looking for, they could agree to what they did. The arbitrator then said, I'm giving my decision. He did modify it a bit. You know, he, he has some convoluted language on scheduling that is gonna cause us all difficulties, because when you read that, he says, I'm ordering a twelve-hour shift, but that's the normal shift. And the city still retains the right for some people at some times in order to do things to give them different shifts. Well, I tried to tell them, as strong as I could in there, is that you do that, all we're gonna get is grievances, because the day we change the schedule, they're gonna say, oh, you can't do that. That's not right. You know, when grievance is saying we can't do it. I said, all you're doing is making this worse for us. But he did it anyway. He was done with it and didn't want to do anything. Ultimately, on wages, you know, he had some things that I simply can't comprehend. You know, when he gave the three percent to them, he came up with some logic that's in there, and you read it, that somehow in the last four years, they lost one, the employees lost one percent, so we had to give them extra one percent to get them whole. What they got, and it was, you'd had a policy for years where you had the health insurance, you'd pick up the first five percent each year, they'd pick the next five, and you'd split the next, and you could change the plan. So everyone got the same split, except the city had to pick up the first half each time. So of course, because you were paying substantially more, you know, in there, their percentage went up, even though their dollars went up the same amount. And he didn't seem quite to comprehend that, you know, last year before we went this, employees were paying three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars a month for health insurance for family coverage. Under the new policy, they paid two-fifty. So they got a seventy-five-dollar-a-month cut in their costs there. He didn't seem to recognize it. But all in all, he said, that's what I'm gonna do. So he gave three, two-and-a-half, and two. City had offered two-and-a-half, uh, two-and-two-quarters, two-and-a-quarter, two-and-a-quarter, and two. So they got three, two-and-a-quarter, and two. The command in there is basically the same issues, except they had, you know, more of a problem, because when we looked at the comparables, part of the reason you have comparables is to check to see are we off base. Doesn't mean, I had to explain it to him a number of times. It doesn't mean that you pay at the average. It's not a mathematical average. It's to say, here's what we think is, you know, prevailing in this comparable. How do we fit? Because the problem, of course, is that everybody else in the city may be in the low end, so why do you move the police up to the high end? When we did that, we found one thing that was very dramatic, and that was, is that while your police officers appeared to be paid appropriately, your sergeants were significantly above the average, significantly above the average. That's one of the reasons that our proposal to the arbitrator was one percent, one percent, and two percent. He ordered them three, one, and two. So they end up getting a percent and a quarter less than everyone else. I think it reflects the fact that, you know, we at least understood that. We did finally get him to change things. He was initially gonna give the union their third year, and he went back at COLA, because we pointed out to him, said, I don't know where you're getting your COLA stuff, but it's two percent. It's been running that way. It's projected to run that way, and he finally changes mind on that. So now we have this ward, and in there, you know, the ward's final unless it decided to appeal it. The appeal rights are relatively limited. You know, on the factual basis, you know, the standard is very low. It's, you know, substantial evidence, which is a really hard test to do. If there's something in the record out there, you know, you can argue he didn't wait all the, you know, his various tests from there, but in there, you kind of mold them in. And one of the difficulties you have on appeal- appeal, even though I don't say it can't happen, is that appeal goes to a circuit judge, you file it here in Manistee, your Manistee judge could hear it, or he could disqualify himself. My guess is he probably disqualifies himself. George?
I would think so, yes.
That's, that's what I expect. So you get a visiting judge to come in, who doesn't know anything about labor law, and they tend to get, you know, their eyes glaze when they, you know, get these things, so, you know, it's always hard to do. We could also resurrect our unfair labor practice charge, because, you know, we dropped it hoping we'd get a better award, didn't mean we gave up and agreed with that. And then you'd have to file a charge, Michigan Employment Relations Commission determined whether the eighty-four hour proposal was a mandatory subject. If it's not, then they committed an unfair labor practice, and the arbitrator couldn't do that. Lot of problems. However, you know, the question is, here's the award, you know, we've got it, a lot of the things, you can, you know, the one thing that is hard to live with, and I think Thad can talk about that, is the scheduling. You know, it's gonna cost you more money, and it's not gonna solve the problem, because there is no way with your staffing that you can't move people around. We sat down, looked at, you know, Tim's been looking at the schedule out there, and with the number of people you have, you simply can't give people a regular schedule that never changes. Just doesn't work out.
And, and John's correct, you know, there's a lot of things that we, in the award that we can live with. The thing that's gonna give us the biggest problem is the schedule, it's written right into the contract, that we can't vary from. And it's not a subject of bargaining, and I know John tried to get that across to the arbitrator to no avail. With this, if this schedule is allowed to stand, it's gonna be, number one, we're going to have a slew of grievances. Anytime we try to move people around or change a schedule, we'll get a grievance. It's gonna be extremely difficult to accommodate vacation requests, it's gonna be extremely difficult to accommodate any training for the department, because we don't have that flexibility that we've had in past years. More importantly, the arbitrator has mandated that the city pay for fi, well, actually, a five percent wage increase for officers, five percent.
Wage, he was right, the cost, the wage doesn't go up, but the amount of money you're scheduling for, if you're scheduled for eighty-four hours, there's effective five percent additional cost.
And so basically saying, you need to work these officers hours that staff feels they don't need to work. So, you know, that, that really is an erosion of management rights. They, the arbitrator's determined that the city needs these hours, and is mandating that we pay for them. And again, the big thing is, is that, that it goes against the tenets of arbitration, it's not something, the, the hours worked is not subject to bargaining. John mentioned, and I, I would agree with him, that I think that we can resurrect our unfavorable, unfair labor practice, and get Merck to, involved in it, who is the ones best suited to hear the merits of the case. And Ed, Ed and, Tim will go into it in a little greater detail, but we took a swing at it as what our new costs are going to be in the next fiscal year, it's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars in new cost for one year. And that's because we have to pay that extra, for those extra four hours every pay period for every officer, and then that's just, then, amount of overtime that we're gonna have to pay to accommodate time off, it's a tremendous amount of money, a hundred thousand dollars. It would be my recommendation to council that, that they allow the labor attorney to file an unfair labor practice with Merck, and then, as my understanding is, once that's done, they file, then they issue a complaint, which then we could take to circuit court and ask for a stay until we get things sorted, sorted out. Ed, did you wanna talk a little bit about the numbers, you and, you and Tim?
So John kinda walked you through what the arbitrator ruled, and I just wanna kinda run through the numbers briefly. So for the, the fiscal year that just ended, June thirtieth, so we're just in our new fiscal year, twenty twenty, but for fiscal year twenty nineteen, this negotiation and arbitration has been going on for over a year or so, none of the officers got a raise, starting July one, twenty eighteen, which is the start of this current fiscal year, so the arbitrator ruled that we had to pay that retroactively. The total that we paid out in this pay period is about thirty-one thousand, but the, the difference between what we had budgeted for and what they awarded, we had budgeted a two percent increase, they awarded a three percent increase, is just about eight thousand. So there's an eight thousand dollar variance from the budget for the prior fiscal year that we just finished for retroactive pay. And then as Thad mentioned, for the upcoming fiscal year, if we adhere to the eighty-four hour schedule, that's five percent, plus the two and a quarter, is a total of about seven point two five. We had budgeted two, they awarded two and a quarter, so that's really pretty negligible. But the five percent increase, when you add that to the fringes, plus that extra quarter percent, that's about forty-four thousand dollars. But that did not intend to take into consideration any of the loss of flexibility that Tim has by not being able to move shifts around to cover vacations, to cover holidays, and it, it generates an incredible amount of overtime. Tim did a calculation just based on, you know, July and August, which granted, there's more vacations in those months, and I think it was close to twenty thousand dollars, or more than that, in overtime for just those two months. So we figure you're probably gonna increase your overtime by up to a hundred percent, maybe a hundred and fifty percent over what we had budgeted. When you take that amount plus the wages, it's in the ballpark of a hundred thousand dollars, give or take, you know, and that's really dependent on how vacation scheduling is, and holidays, and sick time where people are off and stuff, but that's the best we can estimate.
And this, this current budget, Tim had budgeted thirty-eight thousand dollars for overtime, so if you take a, if you take a hundred percent increase, there's seventy, over seventy thousand dollars, adding on to those forty-some thousand dollars of new costs, you know, it's easily a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I think it's well worth the, the council's, for council to authorize us to file the unfair labor practice, and see if we can, can't get out from under this schedule. Tim, I know, has already had a very initial discussion with one of the union reps, and talking about the need to flex officers, and what he's getting from his union reps from home, is that, nope, that's not allowed. So there's an automatic, we're gonna grieve this, and we're gonna have continual grievances, and I don't see an end in sight with this current schedule. Again, you know, there's, there's many things in the, in the award that, that didn't go necessarily the way we want it, but we can live with, but this is really a terrible situation, mandating the hours that they're scheduled. In fact, it's written right in, how many days they work each week, their shifts start at seven in the morning, end at seven at night, start at seven at night, end at seven in the morning. That's all we have.
And, and one thing too, I don't know if John mentioned it, but I think it is worth mentioning, I mean, the issue with the officers and the schedule was, they didn't like that eight hour, that one short day, because it was disruptive and all that. So we made a proposal to, to give them a twelve-hour schedule, where they would actually be working the eighty-four hours, but they would get an earned day off, so they'd still only be getting paid for that eighty, but they would get, what, six additional days off a year, Tim? Nine additional days off a year. They'd have certainty in their schedule, they'd get extra days off, but it wouldn't be more money out of the city's pocket directly, and they didn't want anything to do with that, they wanted to be paid for the eighty-four hours, so the bottom line is, this wasn't about the, the inconvenience of the schedule, it was about getting more money, plain and simple.
When you look at the schedule, if you look at the dissenting opinion, I attached some things there, so I would have it from there, when the arbiter refused to take these things into evidence from there. But when you look back, we did an analysis, they generally have a twelve-month schedule, and they do the shift biddings in November, and vacation schedules, they, they plot out, they've been having a regular schedule for a long. But what happens in there is, you've always had a floater, and before you had a vacancy, you had two floaters. So what's happened, once the vacancy came in, is that the floater got all the bad shifts from there, and in there, you know, when the scheduling was done by the sergeant, you know, frankly, he didn't spread it out, he, you know, all the people at the top didn't have any variations, and if you look back, we, I did an analysis, it's in the dissenting opinion, about how many people had disrupted schedules during the six months, and I think you'll find that, you know, very few people had any kind of disruption from there, and, and you'll find, you know, there was big complaint, we're making people work five days in a row. On the schedule that's developed, there's only two people in six months who worked five days in a row, and that's the two sergeants, who voluntarily switched their schedules so they could enhance the vacation time from there. When I, when you look back in there, and that's, you know, Thad talked about the problem on, you know, the grievances out there, and, you know, in there, there's a lot of stuff, so you, you know, do it, but when he finally did, he said, I'm giving theirs a schedule, but he was very clear on a couple of things, except clear as mud. He said, while the chairman recognized the union's FOS provides in section twelve A that all patrol should work twelve hours per day, chair preserves such provisions in section that addresses overtime, blah, blah, blah. Article four, the collective bargaining provides employer with exclusive authority to establish and change work schedules subject to only other provisions. Then he says, by endorsing and adopting the union's FOS regarding eighty-four hour schedule pay period issues, the majority of the panel, that was of course signed by one of the union, by Mr. Loftus, observes that such provisions do not prohibit the employer from changing all officer's schedules, but only require that the normal, emphasis added, he said, schedule remain at twelve-hour shifts. If it is the majority of the panel's observation, there'll be times or periods of times when shifts of less than twelve hours be necessary, and it may be that some officers will not have a normal workday and schedule of twelve hours and eighty-four hours during these periods, times or periods of time, particularly if the employer within its discretion determines not to provide police protection twenty-four hours a day, fourteen days every two weeks. You know, the way the schedule worked before is that on Sunday nights and Tuesday nights, I could make it there, they would go down to one person from three AM till seven AM, and that's how the eighty schedule worked out there. If the employer determines to maintain service at three hundred and twenty hours every two weeks, have discretion to devise alternative abnormal schedule for a few officers to accommodate such budgetary constraints, and the majority of the panel's determination should not be understood or construed to prohibit the manager right. In the majority of the panel's opinion, normal is not considered as absolute, understood in the common connotation of normal expected. So he's giving us, on, you know, one hand, he gave them their schedule, on the other hand, he gave us his interpretation, that it wouldn't stop us from doing what we're gonna do. I would be very surprised, you know, even though the union signed it from there, I would expect that the first time we try and change the schedule to do those abnormal ones, we'll be told, oh, you can't do that. And, you know, so he goes in there, he says, he gives it, on one hand, he says, I'm gonna give it to him, then he recognizes it can't possibly work, so he says, I, I would interpret it that you'd be able to fix it there. Well, all he does is create more problems for everybody else afterwards, because, you know, when you start reading the language out there, I expect that, as early as, you know, the next couple of weeks, when we try and change the schedule from there, that we'll be getting, you know, complaints saying you can't do that, even though it says we can. Any questions?
What is the cost of all this, since we've been starting this, that we're still going a year later? Because it's gonna add into the cost of...
Yeah, it is, it is going to add into the cost, there's no doubts. And we were given quite clear marching orders by council that they wanted pension relief, number one, and that was the only way we could get it, was to go to arbitration. And there, but we don't, right now, we don't have that absolute cost, Ed is working with John to pull it all together. I mean, we, we know the bills we paid, but there's some other things that John's done for us outside of the Act 312 negotiation, so he's, when he gets back, he's right now on vacation, and I appreciate him coming in here on his vacation to help us, but once he gets back at the office, he's going to pull that out so we can get that absolute answer. But I just don't have it right now for you.
Tim, one of the issues, I didn't go on the pension part, because he didn't grant the pension, just so you'll know how we analyze that, is that he basically said, I think it's unfair to the morale of officers to have a multi-tiered pension system, even though you already have a multi-tiered pension system. You, you did it before, essentially, normally, you try not to have one pension from a three-twelve unit different than the others, and of course, as you remember, last year, last contract, police went down to two point five for new hires, which is, you know, I give them credit, they did that, and this year, fire went down to two point two five. So what the city was trying to do, get everybody, all the new hires at two point two five, you know, that gives you some long-term savings, long-term, but, you know, if you were truly trying to have quality of pensions, so you didn't have systems, you know, a lot of people have misunderstandings regarding pension changes, and you read things in the newspaper, you have different states like California, that say, it's unlawful, unconstitutional to change somebody's pension from the day they hired, so you can't change it, you can only do it for new hires going forward. Michigan's constitution doesn't say that, it says you can't change it retroactively. So you have the ability, if you wish to, to change everyone's pension, you know, right now, you've got a lot of people that had either two seven or two eight for twenty years, you know, you could change it, so they freeze it those years, and then going forward, it's all the same for everybody going forward, equalize it. That would actually give you a lot more savings, because you'd get it immediately for everybody, and it doesn't actually impact people as much as they think. If you've already been here for twenty-five years, and you've got your multiplier, the maximum you can get as a mo, as a pension under MERS, in the eighty percent multiplier, so you do the math, some people are already there, they're probably gonna get to the eighty percent, you know, anyway, you know, and people don't understand that, I remember, still remember years ago, having a knock-down drag-out with a judge for a county, and the judge was insistent, you're gonna give my court recorder that before, I want it, he's gotta have it, and I'm gonna sue you guys if you don't. And I, you know, trying to tell judges things is very difficult, and I finally had to pull out the math and show them, I said, Judge, your court recorder's already been here thirty-three years, she's already over the max, we can change it all we want to, it doesn't give her one dime more of pension. That's part of the thing, if you need to make some changes going forward, that's probably where you have to look at, because, you know, changing one person gives you a really small incremental, and there is some argument about saying, why does, you know, when you have different pensions out there, you know, people look at it differently. They understand if you come in, why somebody had it before, and if everyone's accruing the same, you're probably better off. It was way too late in the game for us to even think about them and that, because in order to make that kind of change, you'd have to go in and do some different actuarials and see what you're gonna do, and look, look, look at every person to see what the impact's gonna be, because you've gotta try and get some agreement from those things. But, you know, he basically, that was his reasoning, he didn't, you know, the fact that your pension may have been higher than other people's pension, he didn't care, you know, from there.
I just wanna remind council that we didn't get the final award until yesterday, so we're still trying to digest all this, and Chief Coles and I have to meet, and we've, we've had some initial discussions on how we're gonna manage this award, and how we're gonna make the schedule that we have right now work for the time being. We have some options that, that we're gonna pursue, and when I, when we make our final decision, I'll certainly let council know how we're gonna do that. But again, I need to hear from council if you would be supportive of filing that unfair labor practice at this time.
How confident are you for winning that?
There's no, there's no sure bets. What, and again, John can speak to this a little bit better than I, but Merck understands Act 312 on arbitration and the powers of arbitrators. And I, I think we would have good standing to convince them that putting a schedule or negotiating work hours is not a subject of, a mandatory subject of bargaining.
Let me rephrase it, and this is why it's hard to explain that where, we have a duty to bargain about how the arrangement of hours is, and the question is, do we have a duty to bargain about how many hours we're working there? That's essentially they're saying, they said, we wanna work four more hours. So the arbitrator said, yeah, work them four more hours, as opposed to, that's my view, is that the management rights you have and the managerial thing says, you get to decide how the eighty hours, then they can bargain with you how to allocate those, and that's the problem, is that, you know, trying to find out how do you get it in there, we had lots of different ways, we said, as we know, Greenville and Cadillac all work them straight twelves, but then they have a comp time, and they have enough people, so it works out, they take a day off from there, so they effectively get paid only eighty hours. But that's the problem out there, is that the two kind of, it's not quite as simple as you like to say, of course you have to bargain about, you know, when you work, that's why we bargain about schedules, but the problem is, is they weren't bargaining within our parameters, their proposal was, you must expand the number of hours worth of work. It's like they said, we get to pick when we go in overtime, doesn't work that way. Actually, that's kind of the frustrating part, is that we had some reasonable things that would work, and, and I think I blame the people down in Detroit, who said, you can win this, you should go ahead and do it, as opposed to thinking it's gonna work. And that's the problem, is we've got now one done to work. I asked them before this came out, I said, will you agree to give us some time to work this out, and not implement the schedule until January first? Because we got people with vacation schedules out, and, you know, theoretically, once this came out, we should redo the whole schedule for the rest of the year, and if there's people that get vacation, they don't get it, well, there's a lot of things that could happen. You know, we asked for that, and they, they're, we're gonna win, we're not gonna do anything. Well, sometimes you need to think about things, and this is, you know, this is part of the bargaining process to do it, it's not a litigation process. And that's where I fault the arbitrator, is that he could've fixed this. I told him, I said, he, he was confused, he, he sat in here, once he recognized, in the middle of the... He, he sat in here, once he recognized in the middle of the hearing, saying, you know, we should perhaps change this to a non-economic proposal so we can do it. And I said, that's what I said, and the union sat back in the room and said, we're not gonna change it. Well, the arbitrator even got confused again, he was saying, well, you guys both said it, I said, I said, no, you didn't. We argued with you early on in December, this should be a permissible, this should be a non-economic, so we have flexibility when you get it to do the right schedule. And I said, you can change it now. By then, he was so locked in, he wasn't about to change it, because that's the result from there, is that, you know, they weren't allowed to get a schedule that works. And the reality was, they, they sat down in Lansing and recognized that we need to have some floaters and have some restrictions in lieu to do it, but then they decided we're gonna do it this way, so... It's not quite as simple an issue as you'd like to say. And you talk about, and I say, there's a case that says you can never do this? No. There's a lot of cases that talk about, you know, you weigh the balance on, you know, management rights versus there, and you come down on a factor line. That's why it's, it's a hard issue.
But, you know, back to the, I don't, I don't know that I could even come up with any kinda odds. And I don't know that that's really the concern. Certainly, you know, it has to be factored in, but more importantly, I mentioned, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars of new costs for this upcoming fiscal year. That doesn't stop at the end of the fiscal year. That grows each subsequent year. So, I, in my mind, I think it's well worth the effort and the expenditures of funds to file the unfair labor practice, when they issue a complaint, go to circuit court, get a stay, and try to, try to have some time to work something out. That's all we're looking for. Because this is, this schedule is not gonna work for management, and more importantly, it's not gonna work for the officers. Because, you know, it, it's gonna be terrible when you can't give people the vacation time that they've earned when they want it. It's gonna be unfortunate not to be able to train our people the way they should be trained. And it's not fair to them, it's not fair to our community. So that's what you gotta factor in. It's, it's, at least, we're, we're ballparking about a hundred thousand dollars in new costs this year, and it will go up in subsequent years. Anybody have an opinion?
I'd like to see this held off, or I haven't even got the arbitration to work, never came in to me.
It was, I sent it out this morning, we just got it last night.
No, but it, we missed him, I looked at it, who's got it?
It wasn't on the email list? Well, then, that's my fault, I, we'll have to adjust the email list. I will get that to you.
And I don't know if anybody had a chance to even read the thing, so...
It takes a while to digest, that's what I was gonna say, is that, you know, we...
I didn't understand a good part of it, to be honest. And I've worked with unions, so I really didn't understand a considerable amount. I know my dealings with, with working with unions in the federal government is, is, you're correct, hours, the number of hours, especially when you're talking about eighty, is, is a standard work week. We're not, it's not like you were reducing it to a thirty-six, it is the standard, the federal standard work week. And the federal government has worked with flexible schedules for at least fifteen years, maybe longer than that, where we have people on four tens, we have others on, on three twelves and, and one eight, and, and multiple combinations, based on, quite often, it, it's making a schedule that works for people and not necessarily, as long as you're doing your work, we don't really care how you get those hours spread out. So I, I don't quite understand where the eighty-four hours comes in and...
I can help you on one part. A lot of people don't realize that the collective bargaining process in the federal government is more restrictive than any place else. They actually, they define what a mandatory subject is, is basically excluding anything involving managerial rights. So you can talk, it's exactly what we're, you know, saying here, is that, you know, you can't bargain about whether we're ready for eighty-eighty-four, we can certainly bargain how, how that's gonna be implemented. And that's essentially, we say in that part, that's where we find our analogy from there, because that's exactly what they do.
Well, for me, it's all about serving the public. And if this schedule is impeding that service, then I feel we gotta do whatever we gotta do to better serve the community. That's what the taxpayer pays for. That's just my opinion. And if we're not getting the service for the dollar spent, then we need to look at that. And see what we can do. We're not gonna spend money if we're not getting the service. That's my opinion. Anybody else? Are you looking for a consensus?
I just need some direction. You know, absent any direction, I'm just gonna authorize the, the labor attorney to file the unfair labor practice.
Does anybody have any direction other than what Mr. Taylor's asking for?
An appeal award, yeah.
I have no opinion, nor can I give any opinion either way.
And I agree with Mr. Taylor.
I wanna be able to read the contract there.
You have enough, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Notifications, communications. Mr. Spicer, Spicer Group, on, our engineer of record, yay! I hope he's got good news.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Sean Middleton with Spicer Group, five fifty-eight First Street. Here to give our, my annual update, as the engineer of record for this to be managed. I'm just gonna really quickly hit it a little bit with our office, what's going on with our staff in office, and I'm just gonna mostly focus on projects and what's happened in the last year as our, as the engineer of record. Our staff here in, in the city of Manistee has grown steadily, slow and steady over the last five years. We have seven people that work full-time out of the office. We're lucky enough to have three interns working with us this summer, survey intern and a couple of engineering interns. You may recognize some of the names up there, Lucas is hiding in the background here. And we're lucky enough also to have a lot, a good support staff from our other offices. And there's a lot of engineers, surveyors, construction techs that make the trip back and forth to help us get through a lot of the projects we do for the city. With the expansion in our staff, the slow, steady growth, we have, looking at doing some small improvements to our office this year. We have two, two addresses, three oh two and three oh four, it's the Westerly portion, we're doing a few improvements just to make it, give us a little more space for some of our employees and improve the working environment. We're adding a Troxler Room, which probably doesn't mean anything to anybody, but it's where we keep our nuclear density gauge, and it's a, it has to be in a very special confined space. In addition to, in addition to the work we're doing inside, we're gonna be doing some work on the outside. We worked with the DDA and we're lucky enough to obtain a facade grant. And we're gonna add some windows and put some awnings across the face of the building. We consider ourselves really lucky to be, you know, living and working in the city, in the city of Manistee, and we try everything we can to give back. So we have, we support some foundations and events, this is kind of a sampling of what we've done in the last year in terms of some of our, back to the community. I'm gonna switch gears and just kinda go through a lot of the work we've done in the last year. Some of the work is completed, some of it's, it's upcoming. And I've broken it into streets, water sewer, and some other miscellaneous projects. On the roadside, on the street side, we completed the twenty eighteen street improvements last year. We took some road cores this fall. We've been actively always working on the tip, that's never a one-time deal, that's almost constantly we're working to revise the tip. Everybody's aware, twelve street's under construction right now, so we're overseeing the construction of that project. And looking ahead, twenty nineteen, this year, we're, we've got the rural development phase one project that we're looking at getting out to bid in July and August. That includes roadwork, so that roadwork will be done this, starting this fall, late summer, fall. And then we also have a couple other streets in addition to that, Hastings and Third Avenue. Those are non-rural development streets. Those are the ones we were gonna put in with Cat B before, and we, we didn't get that grant. But because of the funding we're anticipating out of rural development, we have dollars to do those roads. So we're gonna look at bidding those as quick as we can, but August, September, trying to get those out to bid, so we can go to get some construction late summer, fall. We did underwater inspection, or actually, we contracted with a company to do underwater inspection. We assist with grant applications, and we, we also submitted a grant application for preventive maintenance on the bridge. The coring pro, we, we do a coring program, every year we take cores in the city, and this just allows us to make good sound engineering decisions. This just gives you a sample of where we've been poking holes in all the roads across the city. I mentioned we did twenty eighteen street improvements, you recall, this is just a slide so you can see what was done last year. Looking ahead to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. On the north side of the river, the very top there, that is the work that's associated with rural development. And so there's a storm, there's storm sewer going in, but as a result of that, we'll be improving roads. There is some water main work that's gonna be done in that area. Just to the southwest of that, kinda the angle piece there, that's the section of road Hastings and Third will be improving, that's not associated with rural development. To the south, you can see Twelve Street between Maple and US thirty-one, currently under construction. Over by the wastewater treatment plant at Ramsdale and Seventh is the work we're gonna be doing as part of rural development two application, and that's our large conveyance project, and that will, that will result in the roads being reconstructed at that location as well. Just a couple photos of the twenty eighteen work, Ninth Street and First Street, and there's the list of work, of roads we worked on last year. As I mentioned, Twelve Street's currently under recon, under construction, and this, a couple photos here, storm sewer being installed in preparation for sidewalk. Switching to the wastewater side of things, the Saw Grant, it seems like we've been talking about it forever, is done, complete. City's fully reimbursed, and we're leveraging on that data every day. We use it in GIS, and there's a lot of information we use on daily basis. The Twelve Street and Cosiasko Sewer Project was completed last year, and it, as, as well as the sewer lining pilot project that we did. We completed some work at the treatment plant, digester cover was painted and the sludge pumps were, sludge pumpers replaced. We're actively working on the NPDS CAP, bases of design and rural development applications. I'll talk a little bit about the CAP schedule here in, in an upcoming slide. Probably the most important items we're working on are rural development phase one and phase two, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but those are, are large active projects. We do assist the city with a lot of the sanitary sewer overflow calculations when we have a overflow. And the other thing we're dealing with right now, we've talked about, is sanitary sewer inflows heading into the plant with the high lake levels, and we're assisting with that work as well. You've seen these, these slides many times, but this is the condition of your sewer system, sanitary sewer, and in a very basic sense, it's a good, fair, poor ratings, red bean, poor. And I put that up there, because I just wanted to indicate, give you a sense of what we'll be doing with the upcoming lining work. This area that's showing off to the east side of the city is the pilot project that we just completed. It was about three thousand feet of lining work we did. And this slide is what we're anticipating doing, starting this fall and in, into next year. That's about ten times the amount of work, there's five point four miles of lining we'll be doing, including lining about, of approximately ninety manholes. Even though we're doing all that work, and that'll result in about a third of all those poor sewers being fixed. So it's, there's a big benefit in addition to trying to reduce INI, is we're structurally improving these pipes, and they're really considered a new pipe when we're done lining them, it's like putting in a, a piece of PVC pipe, brand new. Even though we're doing that lining work, we're still gonna get INI from homes, footing drains, sump pumps, there's still water gonna get into the system, and to satisfy the DEQ, we will need to handle that water to eliminate SSO eighteen. And that's gonna require, you know, you know, per discussion with the DEQ, the construction of six million gallons of storage, we'll do that with two, three, two million gallon tanks, with the ability to add a fourth if we had to. We're gonna improve the headworks, we'll have a new headworks building, they'll have screening, grit removal, there'll be dry and wet weather pumps, those wet weather pumps will be able to handle up to five thousand gallons per minute each, those are very large pumps, because they have to handle storm flows when they come. We can no longer send it to the lake, we need to be able to pump that up to these, up to these storage tanks. To get the water, once we shut off SSO eighteen, we need to get it from the intersection of Fifth and Ramsdale to the treatment plant, and that's gonna require putting in a large diameter sanitary sewer conveyance pipe, that'll run down Ramsdale across Seventh and into the, and into the wastewater treatment property. Mentioned the corrective action plan, that's an order we're under with our D, NPDS permit, and we basically are just methodically making our way down the list that's in the permit. We've completed a lot of the items, we're kinda sitting right around commenced construction. The DEQ considered the pilot project to be commenced construction, so the city's meeting that requirement, but we'll be looking at bidding phase one within a couple months, and phase two probably later this year or early into next year. And that's mostly just a result of a lot of work we've had to do with the application, rural development, environmental assessment, property acquisition, right-of-way requirements. And that'll give us a little later start on those projects than we were shooting for, so it could likely influence our completion dates for the construction, being pushed back some, and we've had, and the DEQ is aware of that, and we'll be talking to them more about it. But we're really getting to the point of bidding and construction here in the next several months. On the water side, the big, I guess the big item that we're helping the city with is lead and copper rules and assisting with the pilot drinking water infrastructure grant we have, which really focuses on inventorying the water system and the water service leads and what materials those, those services are. I won't go through the, the asset, the asset management work we've been doing, but we've really leveraged, leveraged on the pilot grant. There was no funding for doing water asset management, so we leveraged on the pilot grant and kind of organically been building your, your water asset management system in GIS. A couple key deadlines coming up for the city is January one, twenty twenty, we have to have a desktop inventory of all the leads, what material they are, so we know what's in the ground or our best estimate. And by twenty twenty-five, we have to have a full inventory, need to know exactly what these pipes are, and have to have a plan for correcting any lead or, or services that need to be replaced. Your water system, you know, we've got, we're starting to get a very good handle on what's out there. Some of the big items I just wanna pull out of this chart are, there's twenty-nine hundred services approximately that the city has, and there's a public side and a private side each one of those. And basically, the DEQ or Eagle needs to know exactly what those materials are and their history, and whether or not they're associated with lead, and if they are, they need to be replaced. So Bruce Banks, he may talk about it next, at the next meeting, but he's been methodically going around checking determined materials, and he's identified about twelve hundred of those fifty-eight hundred leads is what, is what their materials are, so he's making progress towards that, towards that goal right now. Just some miscellaneous items, we've, probably the big ones are, we're finishing up the dock repairs. We're looking at some closeout items on that, final progress payments. We've got an energy audit, the city was awarded in a, a grant, and so we're helping them complete an energy audit, and then a lot of just miscellaneous small items, surveys, GIS, rental inspection program. With regards to the docks, again, we're just, just finishing up and closing it out. We've installed a hundred and four sheet piles with a total length of about four thousand feet, so almost a, you know, eight tenths of a mile of steel piles replaced. There's twenty-seven hundred square feet of decking, and we got a typo on the overall dock length, it might've felt like that length to Lucas inspecting it over the summer, but there's really about eight hundred and four, eight hundred and forty feet of dock was added or replaced as part of the project. So remaining items that we're gonna be doing is the city will be putting the caps... Some remaining items that we're going to be doing is the city will be putting the caps on the piles, and there will be fenders being placed along the steel piles to protect boats against that surface. That's really about it, I think the future priorities for us, and this, this will change based on staff direction or council direction, but, you know, still focusing on streets, street, streets with the tip, and, um, the GIS system and inventory infrastructure is a big, big deal, so we can plan accordingly. I think all our roads from here on out, almost all of them are probably have a utility associated with them. We're to the point now where there's very few roads left that don't have something underneath them that may need to be fixed or addressed. So, it's important to have that organized, we can identify that situation easily. Removing SSO eighteen, still obviously very, very high priority, we're working towards that goal. And then other things that we've been starting to do is looking at asset management for other facilities such as buildings and parking lots, parks, that kind of thing, so we're helping out the city where we can on that. With that, I can take questions.
I have a question. For the average homeowner, when we talk about the water lines, you're making a list of what types of water lines they have, which I'm assuming is from their house to the curb, please.
Yeah, the private side being, yeah, from their house to what we call the curb stop, which is...
How would the average homeowner find out from the city what kind of lines they have? And, and is that something the homeowner is going to have to replace at their cost at some point?
Well, what the owner can do to determine is, one, where it comes into their house is a good indicator, where it comes in, it goes into the meter, you can, you can look, they may or may not know of these materials, but there's, it can be, it's a visible point we can possibly see. The city is called potholing all the curb stops, they're looking at both sides, so looking at the public side and the private, so Bruce has been going through that process. With regards to the costs, on the private side, I'm not sure if we find, so what happens? If we find there is a lead that is either lead, which we really haven't found any of that...
Okay.
Or we find a galvanized pipe, and that was connected to the main with, let's say, a lead, what they call a gooseneck, it's a flexible connection point, because that's lead, then everything upstream of it needs to be replaced, the galvanized needs to be replaced. So, if we find public galvanized, that's been in contact with lead, it's immediately replaced with our projects or in the field, and the private is supposed to be, and I think, funding-wise, how is that paid for, Jeff? Is that on the property owner, or is that...
The city pays for it.
The city, the city pays for the private side, so. Okay.
In the future, yes.
In the future, so. What's happening, all our projects that we're doing, we are replacing anything that we see as galvanized or has had this issue. And so, we're in our contracts, we have a line item to, to go and evaluate or investigate, determine what the, what the connection point is, and if it's all copper, great, we don't do anything, if it's got a lead gooseneck, that gets replaced immediately, because that's the state law.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Sean, appreciate it. Terms and comments, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement. Citizens intended shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have anybody who'd like to, that has any comments tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Manager. Here tonight to introduce our new county treasurer, she was sworn in last Friday, and Rachel Nelson, she was in the county administrator's office for twelve years, and she was the current Assistant Finance Administrator. At any rate, it's time to get her out and about and show her to some of the local units, and that's what brings us here this evening, so without further ado, I want to introduce Rachel Nelson, our new county treasurer.
Well, welcome, Rachel.
I may be a familiar face to some of you, having been with the county for twelve years, and in the community for certainly much longer than that, just getting settled in since I officially just started yesterday, but looking forward to my new position.
Also want to thank you for your patience, patience today.
No problem.
It's always entertaining. Congratulations to Fablight, the Payne family, and the Fablight team, and for council, moving forward, business retention and expansion is key to critical, is critical to economic involvement and lifting, so at any rate, that's all good, and hopefully we'll have some more in the future.
Mr. Donce, would you just do me a favor, for the record, identify yourself and who you...
Oh, okay, Jeff Donce, Cot Road, and County Commissioner and County Board Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Officials and staff.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Sailor.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
And, how about public safety? He's still here, he like...
No, he, he took off, he had a, a daughter come into town, and so we wanted to spend some time with her.
Bradford, anything additional?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. McCullough.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Sean, do you have anything additional?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Um, what was that, rising tide, nothing? How about Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for Jeff. My phone's been ringing off the hook. We talked about this before on Fifth Avenue, that puddle that sits there all the time on the north side of the road, from Ford Street, you know, and it's still there, is there anything we can do about that?
Well, if you notice, there's a lot of ducks that hang out there, so it's kind of a wetland issue now.
Yes, and we like our ducks.
Seriously.
When, when that stretch of, when that section of the north side was separated, they did not extend storm sewer, they took the bottoms out of the catch basins and effectively made them very slow leach basins. That one's just always a puddle, and when we upgrade that street, then we'll try to upgrade and, and adjust that.
Okay. One more thing, on, on Sophia Street, someone calling because the road is kind of washing out by the, one Sophia, you know, I've done about, by Garden Angels.
Okay.
That one block street, like Wilson, Maple to whatever, what about that instant where it's washed and out on the side of it, by the street?
Uh, just curious how long you, ago you talked to him, because we had a...
I talked to him last week.
Okay, several weeks ago, I met with the homeowner out there, and talked about, we're going to do some upgrades to their driveway, I'm not sure if that's the same section or not, but it looks like there's, if I'm remembering, there was kind of a failure right, right along the old driveway where it was overlaid. I'll take a ride by and look at it.
It's on city property, isn't it?
Mr. McCullough, it really looks like they, it was like a asphalt sidewalk more than the road itself, it looks like it's off to the left that's deteriorating, and it looked like they just put asphalt on dirt, and it's just crumbling up, and, and I think that's part of what the issue, because I did...
By the, is it in the sidewalk?
I told you, yeah, I told him to watch.
But it looked more like the side, it doesn't really look like, it looks like the street is out, it looks like it was to the left of the street, like...
Yeah, because we repaved that years ago.
So, that's, not sure who's...
I'll, I'll take a ride by and look at it.
You'll see it.
Okay.
Okay. And there's one more thing, I can't even go to the dentist's office, nailing it. Dr. Gardine has got, by Riverwalk, has got a great big tree, and it's dead on top, you know, behind the old ward start, and he was wondering, is that on his property or is that on the city's property?
I'm not familiar with what tree.
They, you talked to somebody, must not be you, though. It's just before the Maple Street, really screaming tree.
Oh, yes.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I, that, that does ring a bell now. The, um, the tree is on private property, and so we don't have the ability to, to do anything with it.
That's it.
Okay. Mayor, please.
He's had a question.
Thank you.
He's up here.
Sure.
How's the River Walk doing erosion and stuff?
Um, with the repairs, or, the repairs were awarded to Swarovski Contracting, they're in the process of mobilizing to complete repairs of the part done by, of the west end that was damaged, so, doesn't look like it's going to be repaired for the fourth, unfortunately.
Okay.
And the insurance is fully covering us for that expense.
Hey, Jeff, I was down at the, with the dumpsters and that, and somebody's throwing great big boxes, and I thought they were supposed to take that up to Catholic Central. I mean, the dumpsters are really packed.
Yeah, um, the dumpsters are for residential use, and I, I don't know what's happened the last two weeks, but it's, it's been a tremendous amount of cardboard, tremendous.
And I see a lot of junk around, plastic too, everybody's throwing and stuff.
And every time we clean it, it seems like a new set comes back in, so.
I'm going to have to come down and watch the tape, and they're catching them.
Anything else from Mr. McCullough? Mayor Pro Tem?
I just want to take an opportunity to thank our city employees, police and fire, in particular, DPW, of course, and everybody who's working to make our Forest Festival the best yet, and I, I do appreciate all the time and all the effort that goes into, to working, and their, their residents too, I, I recognize that, and I, I hope they get some time to enjoy it a little bit, so, I just wanted to, to let them know that I'm thinking of them and, and hoping that they also have a great Fourth of July, and we appreciate the work that they have done, and will do.
Mr. Goodfrey.
Everybody has a safe Fourth of July.
Ms. Boniek.
Um, I just, I would have to echo, um, beaten said, it's great work that everybody's doing, and hopefully you guys do enjoy it, so happy Fourth.
Okay, I'm going to thank the fire department, they did a good job at that house the other day, it was so close to the other two houses on either side, and they saved them, so, you know, they really did a good job and had all the other fire departments come in to help them, so, it was a great job. Happy Fourth of July.
Mr. Smansky.